Hold on, hold on. You've got it wrapped around his tail here.
This is complicated. Oh, it caught its tail!
It didn't even get him in the mouth. It's got him in the tail. There he is. Go ahead and touch it. Finian, you want to touch it real quick?
Hello? Whoa, yes.
It's slippery, huh?
How many pounds is... Whoa! I guess the... How many pounds was that?
Uh, I don't know. I would say maybe a pound and a pound and a half.
But see, that's the beauty of catch and release.
That's right.
Is the catch and the unexpected release.
What'd you think of that, Finian?
Back into the pond.
What'd you think of that?
Pound it.
Alright, pound it.
Pound it. Look at this, Cameron. We got the... One more time.
Yeah, one more. One more pound. There we go.
He's an accomplished fisherman now.
Yeah, he is. You don't need me anymore. I'm gonna go back and take a nap.
Not it, not it. Again? Hey Dad. Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that L A D W P is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California. And it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it, not it.
Hi, I'm Gina Ray, and this is my dog Whip It. We're from Winnetka. Get it, girl! You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. This is our city and our channel.
In L.A. this week...
L.A. City gets ready for the big one with the Great California Shakeout. Drop, cover, and hold on. Another potentially lifesaving tips for you and your family. I'm Gil Reyes with a story next.
It's a way to keep all Angelinos healthy. Councilmember Gil Sadio helps launch May De Salud. We'll tell you why it's especially important for immigrants.
I'm Rasha Goel. Up next, how these bikes are being used to improve services for sick or injured guests at the L.A. International Airport.
Hello and welcome to L.A. this week. Thanks for joining us. I'm Yana Kay. Hollywood has its heroes, but these are real ones. LAPD officers who sacrifice their lives serving others. As Gil Reyes reports, their names are fittingly etched on an updated star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame.
The rededicated Hollywood Walk of Fame star honors Hollywood Division officers killed in the line of duty. Among them, Officer Joe Rios. Rios's daughter was just five years old when he died in 1993 from injuries suffered in a traffic accident.
This Saturday, I am getting married. I'm marrying my sixth-grade crush and my dad's partner Bobby Alvarez is actually going to be walking me down the aisle. And to me, that's extremely significant because of the fact that they did make a promise to each other, just like a brother would.
And the home of the brave.
The LAPD family gather at the star's rededication at Hollywood and La Brea Boulevards. This updated plaque bears the names of all eight Hollywood Division officers killed on the job since the Hollywood Division opened in 1913.
They are not here to see this gathering in their honor. But what they did continues, and their service and sacrifice will not be forgotten.
There is no honor great enough to return for what they gave to this city.
The overwhelming majority of Angelinos support the Los Angeles Police Department. No matter what you might hear in the media, the support is there. And you all should take great comfort in knowing that the community and the city of Los Angeles has your back.
The original star was dedicated 11 years ago. Today, one new name has been added. That of Officer Nicholas Lee, who died in a traffic accident in 2014. Officer Lee's widow Catherine joined Officer Rios's family at the ceremony. Samantha Rios reacted.
I'm just really proud to be part of this family, the LAPD family, the law enforcement family, and very happy. I know that it's very bittersweet, but it's very happy.
At this tribute to real-life Hollywood heroes. At La Brea and Hollywood Boulevards, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
The LAPD had asked the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce and the Hollywood Historic Trust to add Officer Lee's name. Lee leaves behind a wife and two daughters. A social media prank got one student arrested. As Gil Reyes reports, the incident has also sparked an ad campaign reminding young people to think twice before posting hostile messages.
End it, don't send it. It's the LAPD's new ad campaign to stop threats on social media, like the one someone posted on Snapchat recently that appeared to be targeting Van Nuys High School.
We found out early on Monday that it was a student from Van Nuys High School, a 15-year-old boy, who, as a prank, put out on social media that he was going to be shooting up the school. This type of investigation takes a lot of resources and a lot of effort.
They cause a considerable amount of fear, whether they're real threats or a joke. They still will be treated as serious threats, and they will result in an arrest.
The boy was arrested, then released to his parents. End it, don't send it is a social media ad campaign targeting L.A.-unified students. I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
The LAPD says there's been a rise in students making threats on social media. If caught, it is a felony, even if it is a prank. While it's been a nine-year effort to make Angelinos healthier, Councilmember Gil Sadio has announced the Ninth Annual May De Salud, or Month of Health, at City Hall. Anna Marcos shows us why the city's immigrant population is a key target.
Health in L.A. has taken center stage in the month of October, as Councilmember Gil Sadio helps ring in Mes De Salud, a Month of Health Awareness. The big focus this year: immigrants, as well as mental health.
Do you realize that in the ACA and the Affordability Care Act, if you are undocumented, you cannot buy health insurance?
Living in immigrant communities with a fear of deportation, with a fear of arrest, this increases stress and anxiety.
More than 100 community organizations, along with L.A. County's Department of Public Health and several consulates, are helping to spread the word about the free or low-cost health and medical services available to both immigrants and citizens. Among those free services, this Ventanilla de Salud Health Clinic at the Mexican consulate.
The purpose of the Ventanilla de Salud program is to raise an awareness about the most common illnesses in the Hispanic community, such as high cholesterol, hypertension, diabetes, and recently, obesity.
The first one of these Ventanillas de Salud opened in 2003 in San Diego, then another one in L.A., and now all 50 Mexican consulates throughout the country have one.
These services are not just for Mexicans. Any citizen, including American citizens, that want to take a basic health service, they are very welcome to visit our facilities.
And this year, in keeping with the mental health focus, the consulate has also opened this mental health office. For more information on services, call the Mexican consulate at (213) 351-6826, or visit I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
The waiting game begins for people who applied for affordable housing. 20,000 lucky people will be chosen at random, and as Gil Reyes reports, one nonprofit made the application process easy while continuing to support other causes year-round.
Helping low-income residents find affordable housing is just one of the missions at South L.A.'s Community Coalition. They recently helped people apply for the Section 8 Housing Lottery, a sort of Super Lotto for government housing.
And why did you come out here today?
Because I only need to be the one. I know they're accepting so many persons for the waiting list, but I just want to be that one within the 20,000.
Gail Gordon qualified to apply. If chosen by lottery, her monthly rent could total just 30% of her monthly income, a blessing in L.A.'s expensive housing market.
Preference is given to those who live or work in the city of L.A. and also to veterans. And so people can apply online. The vast majority of people will do it that way. However, we also have an option where people can call into a call center.
But Community Coalition members say many people in South L.A. didn't have the technology to apply online from home, so the organization opened its doors, lending computers and application advice free of charge.
Oftentimes, folks in our communities may have a computer but may not have internet access, and so we want to make that process easy.
Year-round, Community Coalition champions political causes, like improving education and job creation. With Section 8 applications over, Gail Gordon will wait and see if she makes the waiting list for affordable housing. 20,000 people will be chosen by lottery.
I'm very hopeful. I very much could use the services, and I appreciate Community Coalition for having this available for the community.
The earliest acceptances could be notified as early as February. The latest ones could be notified as late as 10 years from now. Just goes to show how much needed Section 8 housing is in Los Angeles. Reporting from Community Coalition headquarters, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
The housing authority of the city of L.A. opened up the application process for the first time in 13 years. More opportunities for affordable housing lotteries could open up depending on state and federal funding. Immigrant groups continue to push back as they rally for sanctuary city status for immigrants in the city of Angels. Anna Marcos brings us this report from one town hall.
A full house at this town hall meeting near downtown L.A. Residents, immigrant groups, and city leaders, including Councilmember Gil Sadio, met to help rev up the push for sanctuary city status in L.A.
The support for a sanctuary ordinance in this city is wide and is deep.
We know we're gonna fight for our DACA, right? DACA has got to be preserved.
The T-shirts here seem to match the feisty mood. Groups like Indivisible Highland Park and ACLU People Power rallied for more protections for immigrants. Most residents here want the LAPD to disengage from federal law enforcement authorities and offer no cooperation in the Trump administration's crackdown on immigrants.
Police ought to be protecting the entire community and treating them equally.
Some protested the divide between rich and poor immigrants.
If you work hard and contribute to the economy and send your kids to school and obey the laws, that's not good enough. But if you have $500,000 cash, bam, you put it on the table, you got a green card. There's something really deeply wrong with this immigration system.
L.A. is now in the process of achieving sanctuary city status, but it's not there yet. These immigrant supporters plan to keep on pushing until sanctuary status begins to offer immigrants some protections. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
Mayor Eric Garcetti says the LAPD already enforces Special Order 40, which bans LAPD officers from detaining people based on their immigrant status. City leaders are working on a legal fund to help immigrants on deportation matters. Would you know what to do during a major earthquake? People worldwide practice protection during this month's Great Shakeout. And as Gil Reyes reports, L.A. is taking extra precautions with an earthquake warning system expected to be online soon.
Kids at L.A.'s Natural History Museum participate in an international earthquake drill. Millions of people taking part in the Great Shakeout, where people drop, cover, and hold on.
That means to drop to the ground, hold your head and your neck with your arms, and hold on until the shaking stops.
L.A. City Fire Chief Ralph Torasis warns Angelinos to get ready and to know the drill inside and out before the big one hits. Mayor Eric Garcetti says September's devastating Mexico City quake underscores the importance of retrofitting L.A.'s buildings. Concrete and wood frame structures with weak supports are most likely to fall first. Though much work lies ahead to retrofit every L.A. building that needs it, hundreds have been upgraded in recent years.
More than 2,000 other structures are already underway for their retrofits, and those are critical. But we also are investing in the early warning system.
The mayor referring to Shake Alert, a smartphone messaging system warning you before a quake arrives in your area. Shake Alert does this by tracking seismic waves. It can also disable machines during a quake.
It can stop trains in their tracks, halt elevators, and drop you off at the nearest floor so you're not stuck there. Even trigger backup generators so you don't get stuck in the dark. And I've made a commitment to delivering this by 2018 to all Angelinos via our smartphones, and I intend to keep that promise.
Back at the California Science Center, officials set up this mock living room to simulate a 7.8 magnitude quake.
It's been said before, but it is worth repeating. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. For some potentially lifesaving tips, log onto the website, readyla.org. Reporting from Exposition Park, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
In California alone, more than 10 million people took part in the Great Shakeout. Expect to see first responders at the Los Angeles International Airport arriving on bicycles. That's right. Rasha Goel explains.
A six-month pilot program is helping provide additional quick response at LAX to handle medical emergencies. It's all part of the new Bike Medic program, where instead of sending an ambulance, cycle teams will arrive on the scene and assess the situation.
By using bicycles, the initial response is expected to take less time. By having fire department personnel arrive so quickly, they are able to perform medical assessments and treatment without the need of sending a fire engine and rescue ambulance into the central terminal area.
Officials say majority of emergency medical service incidents at LAX do not result in ambulance transports to the hospital. Therefore, sending fire companies and rescue ambulances is not time or cost efficient. And having a paramedic on the bike does have its advantages.
Bikes are great for accessibility. Having the diesel rig out here in the horseshoe and waiting in traffic, it could be a cardiac arrest or diabetic emergency, and that patient's not getting the highest level of care. On the bike, you're able to get on scene within minutes or seconds, depending if we're on a call or first waiting on standby.
The Bike Medic program has been around for more than 15 years, but what makes the pilot program unique is the addition of a nurse practitioner and a firefighter paramedic. These resources will help in handling small issues to critical medical emergencies.
The nurse practitioner has an expanded scope of practice above the level of paramedic.
In addition, hours of operation of bike medics have been extended.
We now have two bike medics staffed at LAX Tuesday through Friday.
And with the holidays around the corner, travelers can be assured they will be taken care of. At LAX, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
This pilot program will be assessed after the six-month period to determine whether it will be extended or not. Some students got the day off from school for a day of play at the park. Hope is, this leads to healthy habits. Gil Reyes has more from Silver Lake at Councilman Mitchell Farrell's Fitness Challenge. Gil?
Well, Yana, the point of the entire day is to get young people thinking about exercise and physical fitness as an everyday occurrence and not just something they do every once in a while. The special guest of honor at today's event, an Olympic gold-winning gymnast.
Are you up for the Fitness Challenge? These fifth graders are, led by Olympic gold medalist Nastia Lukin. You may remember her gold-winning gymnastics performance from the 2008 Olympic Games in Beijing.
Wow! We're just gonna be active today, and I'm gonna kind of lead a warm-up and then go through some of the stations with them and just teach them the basics of it.
An entire school day dedicated to exercise. It's all part of Councilman Mitch O'Farrell's Fourth Annual Fitness Challenge. Students participating in gymnastics, yoga, and running drills.
We know that in California and Los Angeles, we have an out-of-proportion percentages of childhood obesity. And so we really need to do something about that. You know, if you don't feel good, and you don't eat right, and you don't exercise, then it really does diminish your quality of life.
Councilman O'Farrell, a former Oklahoma State Champion gymnast, underwent a hernia operation three months ago. He recovered in virtually no time, and credits that to a lifetime of healthy living. This is his first attempt at a gymnastics flip since the operation.
It just goes to show that health and fitness can come at any age.
And how are the kids doing?
I'm with my friends from school, and it's just really fun.
It's pretty good. It's probably my favorite field trip I've ever had.
Hoping the day leads to a lifetime of physical fitness. In Silver Lake, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
Fifth graders taking part in the challenge attend Glen Phyllis, Ramona Grant Union, and Fletcher Drive Elementary Schools. An annual festival showcases local artists with inspiring messages, one that brings the community together. Rasha Goel has more.
Where community businesses, neighbors from throughout the city of Los Angeles convene here at the La Brea Tar Pits to enjoy the sun, have fun. There's food trucks, there's game booths, there's performances. It's just a great day.
Councilman David Rue was among the Angelinos at the 15th Annual Tar Fest, an event showcasing some of the region's finest emerging artists, performers, and cultural innovators on the historic Miracle Mile.
Music's been great. The food was really good. It's just a nice atmosphere, and I love the tar pits.
Anything that has to do with community, community involvement, you know, we love to participate. The neighborhood comes out and supports.
The festival was for the entire family with activities and a little something for everyone. The Free Music and Arts Event has been put on by a nonprofit, Launch L.A. for the past 15 years.
Launch L.A. believes exposure to the arts enhances quality of life and strengthens community.
Well, there's lots to do. There are people painting and loads of kids around, and it just has a really nice vibe to it.
With an eclectic mix of arts, it's one place you're open to create to the beat of your own drum. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
Some traffic lanes that had been removed in Playa Vista will soon be restored, and community members celebrate two beloved venues within the city. All these stories in City Beat. Mayor Eric Garcetti and City Councilmember Mike Bonin announced a plan to restore traffic lanes on several roads in Playa del Rey and deliver a series of new safety features to help protect the lives of motorists, pedestrians, and cyclists. The move came after Garcetti and Bonin asked the Los Angeles Department of Transportation to immediately begin restoring lanes that had been removed on Culver Boulevard, Jefferson Boulevard, and Pershing Drive, and to install new strong traffic safety measures to be completed over the next several months. The new safety measures include new crosswalks with flashing beacons, speed tables that prompt vehicles to reduce speed at intersections, and many others. The city of Los Angeles Department of Racket and Parks, along with Councilmember David Rue and the Travel Town Museum Foundation, celebrated Travel Town Museum's 65th birthday with a ribbon-cutting ceremony for a new gift shop. The new, larger gift shop will feature railroad-related books, toys, clothes, and collectibles. All sales from the store support the Travel Town Museum Foundation, which runs the museum's volunteer programs, restoration projects, and educational outreach efforts.
Travel Town is a very truly unique experience. It's free, and it's open to the public, and each year it hosts thousands of visitors, children and adults alike.
On the other side of town, the Department of Racket and Parks also celebrated another city milestone, the 90th anniversary of the Holby Park Lawn Bowling Club. Holby Park, located in Holby Hills, was originally part of a Spanish land grant and was deeded to the city of Los Angeles in 1926. One year later, the Holby Park Lawn Bowling Club was established and remains the only lawn bowling club operating in the city of L.A. The club currently has 2,000 members, with the oldest member more than a century old.
It's a sport where age doesn't matter. The oldest bowlers in the club are 103 and 100. It just matters how skillful you are.
Well, it's another reason to enjoy green spaces in South L.A. The annual L.A. Power Fest brought close to 2,000 visitors to Martin Luther King Jr. Park, and Anna Marcos brings us the highlights.
The L.A. Power Fest brought out the dancing spirit in lots of folks around here, big and small. The annual party hosted by the Community Coalition is on its sixth year of celebrating a victory. The people in this corner of South L.A. have taken back their park.
Just over seven years ago, this park had a closed-down rec center, no lighting, no sporting, lots of sex work, lots of drug addiction. And we worked with the community to make this park a place for the community, and now we celebrate it.
The health and wellness tent was pretty popular, providing just another reason for more dancing. But the kiddie tent was pretty crowded, too, with face painting, finger painting, brush painting, and, well, just all kinds of creative, messy stuff.
Communities come out, enjoy the park, take over the green space, and enjoy some great music.
But it wasn't just fun and games here.
And we have another tent around getting people to take action, specifically to address some of the issues that are impacting our quality of life here in South Los Angeles.
We get to learn about the issues that Community Coalition is working on, from criminalization of poverty to policing, to the way that we spend our dollars.
Music, dancing, art, green spaces, and a chance to do good in your community. Not a bad way to spend a sunny Saturday in South L.A. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
The event also helped mark the groundbreaking for a new fitness trail in the park. Well, come out and celebrate Dia de las Muertas festivities at the city's most popular cultural destinations, and take a walk on the Wild Side during a tour of Hollywood Forever Cemetery. All this and this week's things to do. For 44 years, Self-Health Graphics and Art has organized one of the most popular Dia de las Muertas events in L.A., and perhaps the oldest Day of the Dead commemoration in the country. This program is unique in that it provides the community with a season of activities from August to November to celebrate and prepare for Dia de las Muertas. The activities include the participation of over 50 community organizations, 150-plus volunteers, and thousands of attendees. The 44th Annual Dia de las Muertas Celebration takes place on Saturday, November 4th, at 4:00 p.m. at the Mariachi Plaza. And the celebrations continue throughout the weekend over at Plaza de la Raza, as it hosts the 8th Annual El Velario Dia de las Muertas Cultural Celebration. This memorable event celebrates the cultural spirit and heritage of Dia de las Muertas. The celebration will feature activities, including an art exhibit showcasing the talents of over 100 various artists, showcasing original, one-of-a-kind Dia de las Muertas pieces. It all takes place Saturday, November 4th and November 5th at Plaza de la Raza. This November, commune with the spirits of Rudolph Valentino, Judy Garland, Cecil B. Demille, John Huston, and others in Hollywood's most exclusive club, Hollywood Forever Cemetery. Join the official walking tour of the Cemetery of the Stars, revealing forgotten scandals from the early days of Hollywood, eulogizing beloved and little-known stars alike, and navigating the mysteries of Hollywood lore. Upcoming tours are November 4th and November 11th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Hollywood Forever Cemetery. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kayne from All of Us here at L.A. this week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth, offering you a taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Okay, good morning, everyone. If everybody would please, everyone, please take your seats. Want to welcome you to City Hall, your City Hall. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday. The public is welcome. Mr. Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Pullman Phil Bonner, Buscayno Sadio, Engler Harris, Dawson, Riza, Kretzky, Corian Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. 12 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Martinez moves and Mr. Bonin seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Price moves, Mr. Rue seconds. Continue.
Mr. President, there are requests to continue items 2, 3 and 4 to November 7th and items 1 and 17 to November 8.
Okay, so without objection, so ordered?
Very good, sir. Items?
You know what? Before we go on, we've been joined by the mayor of the great city of Los Angeles over here to my right. Let's give Mayor Garcetti a round of applause. Let's give the mayor a round of applause. Welcome, Mr. Mayor. You want to run the meeting? I mean, see if you still, see if you still got it? Okay, continue, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, items 5 through 10 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards on these items? Do we have cards?
Mr. President, no cards on 5 through 10. Apparently 5 and 6 have cards now, sir.
Let's hold those two items and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Continue.
Mr. President, items 11 through 30 are items for which public hearings have been held. A Rules, Elections and Intergovernmental Relations Committee report has been submitted and circulated for council's consideration. And there's been a request to hold item 18.
Okay, then so ordered. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. I see no specials from the members. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Continue.
Mr. President, did you want to vote on item 18 at this time?
We're going to hold 18? Just hold that item?
Very good, sir. Items 31 through 46 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
So without objection, those items are now before this, shhh. So those items are now before this body? Do you have cards? Let's get on the same page, guys. Do you have cards?
Mr. President, we have cards on items 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45 and 46.
So that's all items, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then move on.
Items 47 through 53 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
For now, let's do just that, okay? Continue.
Mr. President, that takes council to presentations or items called special.
All right. Mr. Ofero, are you ready for your presentation?
Good morning, colleagues. Ladies and gentlemen, Mike Bonin and I are very, very happy and proud to welcome everyone to Los Angeles City Hall for the kickoff of Transgender Awareness Month. Mr. Bonin and I have worked with the City of Los Angeles Transgender Advisory Council, the Human Relations Commission and ONE Archives to bring this event to you today to shine the spotlight on the T in LGBT. The month of November is Transgender Awareness Month. There is so much to talk about. And we want to highlight our own Transgender Advisory Council and its work to help advise this body on policy that will help better the lives of our transgender brothers and sisters. We want to acknowledge every last one of them and to our two honorees this morning. And we have a very timely theme of those serving in our military. So please help me welcome our colleague, Mike Bonin.
Good morning, colleagues, and welcome to the advisory committee and to our sisters and brothers in the transgender community. It is really an honor and a privilege for Mitch and I to be able to celebrate and acknowledge Transgender Awareness Day and to make a specific focus today on those who have served in the military. The Trump administration's attack on the transgender community has been despicable, beyond the pale and frankly, typical of the type of actions this administration has taken. And the fact that they have gone after people who have done something our president has refused to do, which is serve honorably and risk their lives for this country, is doubly disgraceful. In the history of the LGBTQ movement, there have been a couple milestones in our civil rights battles. One of them, which we all know about, was the fight for marriage equality. Another one of them was the repeal of Don't Ask, Don't Tell. And there was a reason the LGBTQ community went after marriage and went after right to serve in the military as particular goals. Not just because it's equality and it's the right thing to do, but because the military and the institution of marriage are so central to who this country is that there were important milestones in the battle for our human rights and for our civil rights to say that we are equal and that we want an equal stake in the most basic and fundamental and frankly, conservative elements of our society. So it's really, really a pleasure to be able to stand with our sisters and brothers who have have served in the military and stand up for their rights.
Joining us this morning is one of our strongest allies in the city of Los Angeles, someone who is a leader in LGBTQ visibility. Very, very, very proud to introduce our Assistant Chief B. Girmala.
Good morning. On behalf of the Los Angeles Police Department, I am here to underscore the importance of Transgender Awareness Month, the month of November, and we look forward to joining our brothers and sisters in the trans community at several events. But I think it's very important to underscore another fact, a very tragic fact that shows that our work has only yet begun. At least 27 transgender victims of homicide have passed away in the United States year to date in 2017. That is over the 24 victims that were sadly lost to us in 2016. So I would invite everybody for a moment of silence for those victims, largely transgender I thank you for that. So in our celebration of this month of November, let us also take a few moments of reflection as well. On behalf, again, of the LAPD, we'll be working closely again on hate crime and hate incident work investigative. We are very tied to those issues and also our work with the LGBTQ Working Group and the mayor's transgender advisory council. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Chief Girmala. These events are so important for the transgender community as we raise the awareness of their triumphs, struggles, truth, and the great love within the community, working together to lift one another up. One trans woman working toward that effort is the chair of the Los Angeles transgender community, our friend, Karina Somala. Karina?
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you so much. President of the City Council, Honorable Herb Wesson; Mayor of Los Angeles, Honorable Eric Garcetti; Honorable council members of all the districts of Los Angeles; and to all my fellow Angelinos, good morning. Before I proceed, I would like to honor my colleagues from the transgender advisory council. Maria Roman, please raise your hand. Gia Wallace; Diana Feliz Oliva; Jasmine Creighton; James Wen; Terry J; Lucky Alexander; and our youth representative, Addison Rose Vincent. And also, as well as the members of the transgender community, please stand up. We acknowledge. This is your day. I stand up before you as a transgender woman, a Filipino-American, an immigrant, a community advocate, and a chairperson of the transgender advisory council. Today marks the beginning of the Transgender Awareness Month, when we celebrate the unity and resilience of the transgender community, and we honor our rich history filled with courage, challenges, and triumphs. One misconception about our committee is that we are a modern invention brought about by recent social progress, but that, of course, is not true. Transgender people have always existed and contributed to our society. Transgender men have fought side by side with their fellow cisgender soldiers during the Civil War to end the slavery and preserve this nation. Until today, countless transgender soldiers have served and personally served in our military to preserve our freedom and protect this country. Transgender women such as Sylvia Rivera and Marsha P. Johnsons were the mothers of GLBT movement and pioneers of the Stonewall riots. Our fellow Angelino Connie Norman, a transgender woman who was one of the pillars of our fight to equal and accessible health care for all. Today, we honor them. I want to take this opportunity also to thank the city of Los Angeles for giving the transgender community a home. Through the establishment of the transgender advisory council, Los Angeles joins its sister city, West Hollywood, in the commitment to protect transgender people and preserve our rights and dignity as Angelinos. I want to express my heartfelt gratitude for this profound gesture, for your continued efforts to set an example to other cities in the U.S. and the world. Our committee has received unprecedented attacks from the current administration, including the undocumented who are now living in fear of being separated from their families and friends. We have a lot to be thankful for because we have made great strides in our movement for equality and dignity. But today, in this political climate, we must remain united, vigilant, more than ever. I'd like to continue to challenge our elected officials here in Los Angeles and the state of California to continue holding the banner of equality and human rights despite tremendous pressure from the federal government and other states. Now, more than ever, we need you to stand with us in this fight. We have done so much for us in this journey for equality, but this is far from over. We thank you for providing us a home, a safe place for us to live freely and with dignity as contributing members of society, and we hope that you continue to do so. And beyond that, continue to raise the bar in setting the example of what a truly inclusive and diverse city is all about. Thank you very much for your continued support and giving us a seat at the table.
Thank you so much, Karina. So before we bring our individual honorees, Mike and I would like to honor the transgender advisory council with this certificate of recognition on Transgender Awareness Month. Great. Thank you so much. So our honorees, two veterans of our military, Marsha Morgan and Oliver Luciano. So as Mr. Bonin mentioned earlier, back in July, Donald J. Trump announced in one of his feeble little tweets that transgender individuals will no longer be allowed to serve in any capacity in the U.S. military, despite all of the advice from his generals. He followed that announcement with a memo requiring the military to authorize the discharge of transgender service members by March of 2018. Ironic, coming from a four-time draft dodger, a coward and a treasonous president of the United States. I am thrilled to report that on Monday, a federal judge partially blocked enforcement of key provisions of this misguided, cowardly, un-American policy from the White House. It's blocked. Colleagues, our first honoree this morning is Marsha Morgan. When conflict was heating up in Iraq, Marshall wanted to give back to the country, and at the age of 28 enlisted in the U.S. Navy as a sonar technician on a fast-attack submarine. Marshall served in the Persian Gulf in support of Desert Storm, struggling all this time to live authentically as Marsha. This journey was not easy. Marsha, we thank you for your service to our country, for protecting our freedom, and for living your truth today as that of your transgender brothers and sisters, so that they can all have a better life. Marsha, you are a true American hero. Congratulations.
I'd like to thank the city, the council, the mayor. It's an honor. I'm a little uncomfortable to accept that being recognized as a transgender veteran may perpetuate the stigmatism of transgender people serving in the military by those that don't think we should. I'm no different than any other current veteran or anyone still serving. I served to defend my beliefs and my family. I'd like to give out a big thank you. I have a speaking ability here, a strength to speak, thanks to my newest family that have adopted me, the Trans Chorus of Los Angeles, 30 people who use their voices to make music and empower other transgender people, and also the founder of the Trans Chorus of Los Angeles, who I love to call Mom, has helped me with that voice, Ms. Lindsay Deaton. Thank you, Mom. She's back here right now.
Colleagues, we'd also like to honor Oliver Luciano today. Oliver, if you could please step forward. Oliver joined the U.S. Air Force 482nd Fighter Wing Reserve Unit in Homestead, Florida in 2008. He trained with the 366th Training Squadron Detachment 6 at the Naval Construction Battalion Center in Gulfport, Mississippi, and rose to the rank of leader of his graduating class. He was awarded several medals, the National Defense Service Medal, the Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, and the Expert Marksmanship Ribbon. He served for two years with the Air Force Reserve. He holds several degrees from the University of Phoenix, and he is contributing right now to the betterment of Los Angeles and to the transformation of our airport into a world-class airport. He works in administration for an engineering firm, Turner PCL Joint Ventures, which is working on the midfield satellite concourse and the runway improvements at Los Angeles International Airport. Glad to have you as a fighter for us in the military and glad to have you as an advocate for us in making a better Los Angeles. Thank you so much.
Colleagues, I failed to recognize Francisco Ortega from our Human Relations Commission. Francisco, who is doing all the work, keeping all of these efforts together on behalf of the city of L.A. Thank you so much. Congratulations, everyone. And this concludes our presentation.
And council member Paul Kretz, the floor is yours. And Herman, I'm going to remind you, if you're going to disrupt presentations by flaring your arms or trying to stand up during presentations, you're going to be asked to be removed from council chambers. That'll be your fair and final warning.
I'll wait until everybody files out. Hopefully, my colleagues aren't too distracted by the last presentation.
Mr. Kretz, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, colleagues, I'm thrilled today to recognize Nathan Runkel, who established Mercy for Animals, the world's leading farm animal rights organization, when he was only 15 years old. I don't know about you, but when I was 15 years old, I was collecting comic books and playing Little League baseball. Mercy for Animals is on the front lines, fighting to protect farm animals from cruel practices and abuse. Perhaps best known for their ongoing undercover and often very dangerous investigations, Mercy for Animals has revealed horrific animal cruelty and abuse within the meat, dairy, and egg industries, not only right here in California but worldwide. These investigations have garnered widespread media attention, often resulting in corporate reform, criminal prosecution of animal abusers, and the introduction of legislation to protect farm animals. Mercy for Animals was a leader in passing Proposition 2 almost 10 years ago, which took the first major step in making the treatment of farm animals in California less cruel. They'll also be a leader in working to pass another initiative, which will go even further, the Prevention of Cruelty to Farm Animals Act in 2018. Nathan is a nationally recognized speaker on animal protection and veganism, and he has presented at colleges, conferences, and many other forums around the globe, traveling to over 30 countries, giving lectures, and helping launch vegan and animal protection initiatives. In fact, Mercy for Animals worked with my office several years ago to pass a Meatless Monday initiative at City Hall, speaking about initiatives for schools and restaurants. We're especially excited to have Nathan in our council chambers today, shortly after the release of his book, Mercy for Animals: One Man's Quest to Inspire Compassion and Improve the Lives of Farm Animals. It is a compelling look at animal welfare and factory farming practices, with many personal anecdotes as well. Nathan would have been a fifth-generation farmer in his small Midwestern town, but instead, he founded the nation's leading nonprofit organization dedicated to protecting factory-farmed animals. The book describes the organization's early days in grassroots activism to dangerous and dramatic experiences doing undercover investigations, as well as the organization's current large-scale efforts at making sweeping legislative change to protect farm animals and encourage compassionate food choices. The book is also a call to action with the hope of opening hearts and minds to understand the suffering of these animals and what they go through. As Nathan often says, his goal is to put his own nonprofit out of business, and for the animals and the planet, I hope that day comes sooner than later. Nathan, thank you for all the great work that you continue to do.
Thank you. So Nathan, it's my honor to have you here, and I'd like to ask you to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kretz and city council. It is an honor to be here today on World Vegan Day. I'm sure everyone was well aware of that and celebrating in your own way. Gandhi once said that the greatness of a nation...
But their abuse on factory farms is not isolated to them being the only victims. Workers in slaughterhouses suffer as well. It's one of the most dangerous jobs in our country, and they suffer not only physically but emotional trauma from killing animals day in and day out. Factory farms are also breeding grounds for disease, and overuse of antibiotics is causing an epidemic in this country. Animal agriculture contributes more to greenhouse gas emissions than the entire transportation sector. But the truth is, is that we all have power as individuals, as a country, and as a city to choose kindness over cruelty every time that we eat. And I believe, as Gandhi said, the greatness of a city and its moral progress can be judged by the way it treats its animals. And in that way, I thank all of you for the leadership that you have shown on a national level, banning bull hooks at circuses, which created a ripple effect across this country, helping to free elephants from a life of misery inside of traveling circuses by supporting Meatless Monday programs. But there is much work to be done, and I believe how we treat animals says a lot about who we are as people, who we are as a city. Because the truth is, is that these animals, including farmed animals, are completely at our mercy. We hold all of the power, and we must use that power for good, to promote kindness and compassion. So thank you so much for this honor today.
Okay, we have two speakers on the queue. The first one, which is fascinating to me, because I've never seen this happen, is Paul Coretts. Did you wish to speak again?
No, that was from the last item.
Got it. And then Mr. Kukorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Nathan. Thank you for your work, and thank you for your powerful words today. I think, I hope that everyone listens carefully to what you described as the importance of this issue, not just to those who are vegan, not just to those who are vegetarian. Everyone needs to care about the condition of factory farms when it comes to our food 10 years ago, when I was a member of the state legislature, I authored a bill to prohibit non-ambulatory animals in a farm factory situation from getting into the food supply. And this is as basic an issue as I think you could have, that an animal that's too sick to walk is still being put into the slaughterhouse for processing for human consumption. And the greed that generates this kind of cruelty is not only despicable, but it's a clear and present danger to our nation's public health. And yet, a bill like this, you would think it was World War III, fighting against the agriculture industry in this state and nationwide. They challenged my bill all the way up to the United States Supreme Court. So I think as a nation, it's really important that we understand that there may be a spectrum of your engagement in this issue. You might be vegan, you might not be. But even if you're not, you should at least insist that we resist cruelty in all of its forms. Farm animals, many people don't know this, farm animals are statutorily exempt from animal cruelty laws. So the things that we would never tolerate in any other context are done on an hourly, on a minute-by-minute basis in a factory farming situation. So your courage, not only in going and gathering undercover evidence and doing the things that you're doing to speak out on behalf of these animals, it really makes a big difference, not just for the animals, but for all of us. And for that, I want to thank you.
Counselmember O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts, for always being a champion of animal welfare. And congratulations, Nathan. It's people like you that bring a greater awareness to everyone on the obscenity of animal cruelty. Spiritually, I don't think humans will ever evolve unless and until we realize that what makes us humane is how we treat other beings, including animals. I think until we can figure that out, we'll be in our own sort of prison of misery. And I think that an enlightened approach to how we treat our animals is the way to go, and that will make us better as a human race. Growing up partly on farms in Oklahoma, big agribusiness was a foreign concept to us. So that is, as Mr. Kukorian said, it's really a vehicle of complete, abject greed, which breeds cruelty. But you, as an individual, and your allies and those you work with, are changing that conversation. And so I want to commend you for being a 15-year-old and starting this organization and spreading the word across the United States and the world for a more humane world and planet that we live on. So congratulations. Thank you.
Actually, I was just thinking about something as I was hearing Mr. Kukorian. I carried a number of animal bills in the state legislature, but I had a conversation with one of my colleagues who said, you know, it's hard for me to be sympathetic because I'm sort of numb to the cruelty because my first job was cutting the beaks off chickens at a factory farm. We still have so much further to go, and we are moving in the right direction because of Nathan and his organization. So it's my honor to present a certificate on behalf of the city of Los Angeles to Nathan Runkel, and I thank him for all his amazing work.
Awesome. Thanks so much. Okay, Councilmember Huizar for a special presentation.
Also, Ms. Martinez and Mr. Price.
And Mr. Price as well.
And as you can see with the altars here, we are here today to talk about Dia de los Muertos and some of the working conditions at the port. Dia de los Muertos is a time when we celebrate and remember our loved ones who have died. And it is appropriate time to acknowledge workers in many of our most dangerous jobs because unfortunately, sometimes those workers make the ultimate sacrifice. Today, we acknowledge and thank the warehouse workers and port truck drivers who are such an important part of our local and regional economy. These are dangerous jobs, and it is part of our duty to try to reduce the dangers and disparities in the system. Many of us have heard the stories of workers facing unfair conditions in the many parts of the supply chain that is our fright industry. We have heard of wage theft, negative paychecks, and the financial risk of large corporations having to be shouldered by workers who are misclassified as independent contractors. And we have heard about dangerous conditions, dangerous for the workers and for Angelenos on our freeways when truck drivers are pushed to work beyond safe limits established by the federal government. We are grateful for the services the workers provide, and we are pleased to join with them today. In the tradition of Dia de los Muertos, we mourn, celebrate, and honor those who have lost their lives while working and serving our city and our country. Now, I'd like to invite the workers to share a few words, and we will start with a moment of reflection led by Reverend Andy Schubert of Emmanuel Presbyterian Church.
Good morning. My name is Reverend Andy Schubert, and I'm part of clergy and laity, United for Economic Justice, and also pastor at Emmanuel Presbyterian Church in Koreatown. I want to thank Councilmember Jose Huizar for recognizing the struggle of the workers at the Port of Los Angeles. And we have stood with port truck drivers and warehouse workers time and time again. We've seen their strength by refusing to be silent in the face of pain and suffering. We've witnessed their courage when they confront management and city leaders demanding an end to their exploitation and abuse from companies that violate labor law at L.A.'s port property. As the community celebrates their loved ones through beautiful altars, food, music, and offerings, today we remember the workers at L.A.'s ports who have died fighting the injustice and abuse that they have faced as workers. Today, we honor their labor, their work, their sacrifice by lifting up the stories of workers who continue to fight against wage theft and racial discrimination, poverty jobs, hazardous working conditions, and so much more. One of the key elements of el Dia de los Muertos revolves around offerings, which echoes the dedication and love that is presented towards those who have died. The offerings that we lay before you today represent the hard work of our brothers. It represents their lucha, their struggle, and who they are as workers that makes our ports thrive. The offerings like food and water symbolize the nourishment and the strength that workers will need during this journey towards justice. I want to just name the workers that are present and also the ones that will be speaking. The warehouse workers that are present today are Alberto Arenas, Stephen Hatch, and the wife of one worker, Graciela Hoak. The drivers present are Manuel Rios and Rene Flores. I want to invite warehouse worker Alberto Arenas to come forward this time.
Buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es Alberto Arenas. Buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es Alberto Arenas.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Alberto Arenas.
I work at the warehouse NFI Calcarde that is on L.A., at the L.A. port.
I'm 62 years old, and I have been working at this warehouse for over 22 years. There's a lot of injustices at this warehouse, and we need the support to really address these injustices. And, for example, like wage theft and also the low wages where it's very hard to survive. In my case, I can't retire because there isn't enough to support my wife and myself. And, you know, we are in this fight to change things, not just for us, but more so for the new generation that's going to come after us. For them not to be exploited like we have been exploited for over 20 years at this warehouse. Many of my coworkers have to sleep in their cars because there isn't enough to pay for rent. And I'm here with my coworkers, as well as the community that has been supporting us, and that we ask for you to take action so that there could finally be justice at this warehouse. And that's it for now. Thank you.
Want to invite Rene Flores to share his testimony.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Rene Flores. So I don't know how many of you all read a recent article published in USA Today around port truck drivers. I was one of those drivers who was fired simply for speaking the truth. So I am here today asking for one minute of your time because the problems that we are facing are big and very important. Due to the misclassification that drivers at the port of L.A. and Long Beach face... Companies at the port abuse and exploit us. For more than four years, I worked at a company named Morgan Southern. So the deductions that were made from my paycheck were excessive. There were times where I only got three days of work, and what I made wasn't even enough to pay for the truck expenses. Muchas veces y muchos meses, me fui a mi casa sin ningún...
Y por eso vengo ahora, y les quiero pedir que me pongan un minuto de atención, por favor, porque el problema que tenemos nosotros es grande y grave.
So I am here today asking for one minute of your time because the problems that we are facing are big and very important.
Debido a la mala clasificación que tenemos nosotros, los troqueros, en el puerto de Long Beach.
Due to the misclassification that drivers at the port of LA and Long Beach face.
Las compañías se aprovechan y nos explotan y nos abusan.
Companies at the port abuse and exploit us.
Por cuatro años y medio trabajé para una compañía que se llama Morgan Southern.
For more than four years, I worked at a company named Morgan Southern.
Las deducciones eran excesivas. Habían veces que el camión se dañaba, y nomás trabajaba tres días, y no sacaba pero ni para el costo del camión.
So the deductions that were made from my paycheck were excessive. There were times where I only got three days of work, and what I made wasn't even enough to pay for the truck expenses.
Muchas veces y muchos meses me fui a mi casa sin ningún centavo de mi cheque, y supuestamente, las leyes de California dicen de que ningún empleado se puede ir a su casa sin un cheque, pero ¿por qué permiten que estas compañías sigan laborando en el puerto de Long Beach y explotándolo a nosotros, los trabajadores?
So there were times where I would go home many times without a cent, without any paycheck to take home. I thought this was something that was not allowed in our state. So why are companies that operate at the port allowed to do this?
No es posible que nosotros, los camioneros de Long Beach, en este mes de la Navidad, para nosotros es una fecha triste, porque con los sueldos que nosotros tenemos, no podemos darles ni un presente en la Navidad a nuestros hijos.
So now that the holidays are coming up with Christmas coming up, this is actually a sad time for drivers at the port of LA and Long Beach, because sadly, sometimes we don't even make enough to be able to buy gifts for our children.
Se han puesto a pensar cuando ustedes van a las compañías como Target, Costco, Walmart, a comprarles el presente, un regalo para sus hijos. Ustedes no se dan cuenta del sacrificio que ese regalo lleva para la alegría de sus hijos. Ese regalo lleva el sacrificio de nosotros y de mis hijos y de mi familia y de todos los troqueros del puerto de Long Beach que estamos siendo explotados.
So I want you all to think about a time where you all go to Costco, to Target, to Walmart, to buy gifts for your children. Think about the sacrifices that are made by myself and my family and the families of all port drivers who serve the ports of LA and Long Beach, the sacrifices that go into that.
Y les menciono esas compañías porque ellos son los que hacen negocio con estas compañías del puerto que nos explotan y nos abusan.
And so I named these big brand companies because they are the ones that do business with port trucking companies who abuse us and exploit us.
Por eso venimos ahora en día aquí para que nuestras voces sean escuchadas, y ustedes que tienen el poder, nos den el apoyo y pasen esa ley que se llama Paz Laboral para que nosotros tengamos un salario justo y nuestra familia tenga una vida justa y digna como nos merecemos.
And so that is why we are here today, lifting our voices to you all who have the power to support us and to help us bring labor peace to the ports, so that we can have dignity and provide dignity for our families.
Es todo lo que tenía que decir. Muchas gracias.
That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Want to invite Manuel Rios to come forward this time.
Buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es Manuel Rios.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Manuel Rios.
Yo también soy trabajador de los puertos.
I am also a port driver.
Tengo 23 años trabajando en los puertos.
I have been working at the port for 23 years.
También, como dijo el compañero, ya no les quiero decir más porque él ya dijo más y menos todo lo que yo podría decir.
So I don't want to say much more because my colleague here has told you all what the conditions are like at the port.
Pero más que todo, vengo a representar a la familia de este señor, Don Alfredo Arámbula.
More than anything, I am here representing the family of the man you see here in this picture, Mr. Alfredo Arámbula.
La familia no pudo venir, pero yo puedo hablar por ellos un poco.
So the family unfortunately was not able to come today, but I can speak on their behalf.
Yo trabajé también con este señor por 20 años en la compañía KNR Transportation ahí en Wilmington.
So I worked with this man for over 20 years at a company named KNR Transportation in Wilmington.
Como dijo mi compañero, de tanto abuso y de tanto estrés, este compañero no está presente con nosotros porque, desgraciadamente, ya se nos fue de este mundo.
And so, like my colleague just said, due to the conditions and the stress, unfortunately, our friend here is no longer with us. He has departed this earth.
A mí también me ha pasado un caso similar, pero gracias a Dios, yo estoy aquí por lo menos contando el cuento.
So a similar incident happened to me, but thank God, I am still here and telling you about this.
A mí me han dado ataques al corazón, derrame cerebral, por trabajar 14 hasta 20 horas diarias en los puertos.
So I have suffered heart attacks and strokes because I have worked between 14 and up to 20 hours at the ports.
Entonces, lo que les quiero decir es que a nombre de este compañero que no está con nosotros, a nombre de los compañeros de los puertos, les pedimos a la comunidad y a ustedes que trabajan para el gobierno que nos ayuden en esta lucha.
We got to be careful and start wrapping it up if we could. So please, thanks. Sorry.
And so, we want to ask for your support as port drivers, for you all who are public servants, for your support to address these issues.
Para que las compañías ya no sigan abusando a los trabajadores de los puertos y a los compañeros de las bodegas.
Thank you.
So that you all can end the exploitation that occurs at the ports. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we're going to turn it back over to one of the council members, please, and let them go back to running the presentation.
Thank you. We have Ms. Martinez and Mr. Price who are going to share a few words.
I'm happy to give my time sometime soon.
Thank you.
Please, go ahead.
We just want to invite all members of City Council to this Truth Commission on Poverty, Racism, and Exploitation on LA City Property that's hosted by the SCLC of Southern California's Poor People's Campaign, and it's co-sponsored by City Councilmember Corin Price. And it's on November 9th, Thursday, at 5:30 to 8 at the Phillips Temple CME Church in Los Angeles. So we want to invite everybody here. We can get flyers to you all to make sure that you're able to get the information you need to make it there and join us. Thank you much.
Thank you. I'm just so honored to join my colleagues, Councilman Wezar and Nury Martinez, as we stand in solidarity with the, to honor the hard work of individuals who are an important part of our lives, whether we realize it or not. Port truck drivers and warehouse workers are the folks who make our world go around, and I guarantee you that somebody's going to come to you today that arrived because of their work. And so, again, I'm just honored to join in commemorating the work of these hard-working individuals, and we ought to do all we can to make sure that they are working under fair conditions and with fair wages so they can support their families and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. On behalf of Ms. Martinez, myself, Mr. Price, and other council, we are here today on Dia de los Muertos to acknowledge those who have passed while working, those who have left families without someone to support them, as they were probably sometimes the only person bringing something home. And we want to acknowledge as well all the working people in the city of LA that we work and recommit ourselves to see for working conditions for all. Thank you very much, and thank you to all the workers who are here today.
All right. So we're going to go ahead and take a number of closed session items up. Item 47, 48, 50, 51, and 52. And Mr. Kokorian, these were already in the Budget and Finance Committee?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. Budget and Finance recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations on each of those items. Each of them is a settlement that can be approved in open session unless members have questions or concerns. Item number 53 should be held for closed session, and on item 49, there is an amendment in the instruction that I think the city attorney will address.
Yes, and I believe we have cards on that as well, so...
We only have cards on 49, so on 47, 48, 50, 51, and 52, did you wish to just move forward on those, and we'll hold the other one for the card?
We can move forward unless members have questions or concerns.
Okay, members, we'll go ahead and, unless you have, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those items. We'll go ahead and read the settlements first.
Very good, sir. For item 47, in the case entitled James Abat versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $750,000 in settlement. For item 48, in order to effect settlement of the claim by Azdula and Connie Almdari and Perpen III LLC, there is a recommendation to expend $345,000 in settlement. For item 50, in the case entitled Maximilian Bravo versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $130,000 in settlement. For item 51, in the case entitled Noe Navaret versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $200,000 in settlement. And lastly, for item 52, in the case entitled Victoria Laramore versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to $175,000 in settlement.
Okay, with those, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, that has been approved. Next item, we're going to go ahead and reconsider item 16. So we'll go ahead and open the roll for reconsideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right, and that item has been amended and circulated, so we'll go ahead and open the roll on the amended item and close the roll. All right, so that is approved. The next item, please. We'll go in, let's go ahead and take item 18. It was called "Special" by Mike Bonin. You don't wish to speak on it? But I do have a friendly amendment on this. And on 18, I would like to ask that we actually, go ahead and approve it and move it forward, except also amend it to have the respective hope team departments report back to the Public Safety Committee with their data from the previous four months, and with that, their anticipated deployment need going forward so that the appropriate resources and personnel may be allocated for the hope teams in 2018 budget. So if I can get a second on that?
That would be him. I'm a no vote on this.
Yeah, I know you're no. It's, yeah, it's to move forward with this item, but also to report back to the Public Safety Committee with essentially the deployment on what Hope has been doing thus far in the last four months to, so we can look forward. Okay, so, seconded by Mr. Kokorian and as well as Mr. Blumenfield. Thank you very much. So we'll go ahead and open the roll as amended. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
And one no. Okay.
13 ayes, one no.
There you go. Thank you very much. The screen was right. The vote was right. Okay. All right, then that is approved, and next item, please. We're going to go ahead, why don't we go ahead and go into the multiple speaker cards?
And I believe we have also on 49, which has slightly changed agenda items since Budget and Finance. I'm going to read the recommendations out, and anybody with a card can comment. So on Agenda Item 49, the matter of Robert Rodriguez versus Los Angeles Police Department...
Mr. Chair, so the, one, I don't accept the amendment as friendly, and two, I'd like to reconsider it.
No, that's fine, but we have multiple cards on 49. So we'll go ahead and go into the multiple card portion, and then we'll come back to it so we can satisfy it.
So...
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I didn't accept the amendment as friendly, and I'd like to reconsider?
On 18?
18.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine. So we'll go ahead and reconsider item 18?
Just the amendment. Just the amendment.
Just the amendment?
Yeah.
It's as amended, so we'll just go ahead and reconsider it and hold it and come back to it. It's not a problem. Okay, so we'll reconsider item 18. We'll open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, one no.
Okay, we'll go ahead and hold that on the desk for now.
So let me, before we take the multiple cards, read in on number 49. So on Agenda Item 49, which is the matter of Robert Rodriguez versus Los Angeles Police Department et al., the Budget and Finance Committee recommendation is to settle the matter for a total of, for $400,000, of which $75,000 is indemnification for a judgment for punitive damages awarded against Detective Douglas Johnson. In addition, the city attorney requests that the council, acting in its sole discretion in approving the settlement, make the associated findings for the indemnification as required under Government Code Section 825B, namely, first, that the judgment is based on an act or omission of an employee acting within the scope and course of his employment as an employee of the city; second, that at the time of the act giving rise to the liability, the employee acted or failed to act in good faith without actual malice and in the apparent best interests of the city; and third, that payment of the claim or judgment is in the best interests of the city. So when this comes for a vote, unless any objects, we'll be voting both on the settlement amount and indemnification, including the findings that I just read off.
Okay, so I believe we're going to go to the multiple comments section though now at this point. So let's bring up on my screen, Mr. Who do I have? Is this Mr. Spindler? Mr. Spindler, 5, 6, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, all the way to K, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46. General public comment.
Yes. Thank you so much on Settlement Day, yes. So now, we're going to talk about the other shit that you viewers may not have seen. So let's start with item 5, CD 11, Mike Bonin's district, Mike Bonin, the First Amendment Advocate. Yes, on number 11, thank you so much. Yes, we give Mike Bonin amnesty.
Mr. President, we've already voted and taken public comment on number 11.
What?
No, keep going.
Yeah, yeah.
Just keep going.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Shut the fuck up, Mr. City Attorney.
No, no, no. Mr. Spindler, you speak to the item.
Oh, well, okay, he's complimenting.
No, you just speak to the item, your last warning.
All right. So number, let's see here, as we said, number 11, Andrea Garcetti to the Native American Indian Commission.
And again, we already voted on a...
No, 11, no. You were speaking on 5. 11 is, you can't speak on it, so pick one of your other items. You have enough.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's true. That's true. Okay, Mr. Poppet, go ahead.
No, just pick an item.
Pick an item.
31!
Good choice.
Number 3, Bob Blumenfield, yes, on number 31. He's been very kind to us lately, yes, so we support it. Number 32!
That's in CD 10.
Of course, Mr. President, we honor you, yes. Number 33, Independence Avenue, CD 3. There's a lot of rich Jews that live on that street, yes, on that. Illuminate! Give the Jews light on number 31, yes.
Stay on the subject.
Number 34, CD 13, yes, because it's in CD 13. There's a lot of violence there. CD 8, 35? No! CD 8 can't afford it. Take the money out of Mr. Marquis Harris Dawson's personal account, not the taxpayers'. Number 36, Measure N? Number 36, Measure M? We've already stolen the money for Measure M, so we have to vote, yes. 37? Go ahead, sir.
Rent escrow!
Yay!
Amnesty for landlords, look at them all. CD 8, CD 9, CD 10, CD 5. And CD number 2.
[laughing].
Yes, on that. So wonderful. And the Disability Coordinator on number 39, yes. Make Mr. Herman's dream come true. Pass number 39 forthwith.
Give him his one minute.
So today, I've been talking to some of the men and women in uniform. When a police officer in the city gets a punitive damage award against them, you have to understand something. I'm suing right now, I'm asking for punitive damages. When I get my judgment, when I get my settlement, the city must pay it under Government Code Section 825B. There isn't a cop here that doesn't do what they do to us because they're pressured by Charlie Beck and this council to violate civil rights. If they don't do it, they get demoted, they get put in a desk job, and they have to go work in Marquis's district. So no, no, no. No personal fucking liability for cops. The city covers the bill. Our police officers are as much a victim as I am. And finally, fuck the Dodgers!
Okay, Mr. Previn, Eric Previn, please. Mr. Previn, 36, 39, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 49, 53. General public comment.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from Studio City. It is a jam-packed agenda, and I think it's interesting that at 39, you're getting an ADA coordinator position, and you're looking for the right requirements. And I'm hoping that you're expanding your look for people who are willing to speak up when the voluntary compliance agreements land on the desk and the group goes into the back and decides to attenuate the matters for five, six years and then cost the public an enormous amount, like with the judgment obligation bonds which we are facing. Richard Llewellyn is not responsive. We're asking, are they happening, are they not happening? And he's very, very quiet. He's shuffling around quietly. We want to know, and we know that it's bad news. Unfortunately, it's good news, I would have to say, that we're reaching out to the blood donor group. And one thought, and I think it's nice to raise, you know, awareness and get blood, frankly, for people who need it, but I think putting it on the paycheck can be problematic. So I would look into whether or not that's actually a good area. I think it's wrong to run...to raise funds that way or raise blood in the case here. Don't get me wrong, there are ways to do it that are appropriate, and I support those. Item number 42, we have unclaimed bicycles the LAPD is going to happily help out with. I just want to remind that all LAP donations for 2016, Sharon Dickinson is the clerk who should be gathering that public relation...California Public Record Act request and providing it timely. That would be appropriate. Item number 44, kudos to the Office of Finance for having a little award ceremony in City Hall. We like that. Now, as you know, sir, the Office of Finance is buzzing in anticipation of your cannabis rollout. Here comes Englander to violate the public. Okay, thank you for that. Item number 46 is a little typo, $60,000. It was nice to see Mr. Harris Dawson jump up to facilitate item 18, but these are related somehow because it's all LSA money. And it was up in HHH, the decision was made to migrate money from homeless services to migrate it toward emergency response or cops. And you're going to take care of it up in HOPE, which is, you know, HOPE with bulldozers, so it's not the kind of HOPE that the people who need help are hoping for. And then on item number 14, sir, here you have Nicole Chase is being appointed to the Zoo Commission.
We've already voted on 14, Mr. ...
We've already voted on that item.
Oh, okay, sorry, I made my misunderstanding. Sir, you look at the agenda, it's confusing, and you should shave also, as will I later. Edgar Colodion today is on item number 16. This is a great leader...
And also, that was voted on already.
Well, he is a leader. All right, fine, we're moving on. Item number...well, I may have the wrong piece of paper here, sir. Can I speak on 53? Barad Forzat? This is the Studio City Hand Car Wash you just settled, or you're going to go into a closed session to discuss that matter. This is a guy who David Ruh is reaching out. David Ruh, the new co-chair, along with hashtag Bob Blumenfield for Council Rule 93 expansion. We want recognizable public speakers, and David Ruh is going to work on that along with the First Amendment Leader, Mr. Bonin. But Barad Forzat...
Thank you very much. So now you're on general public comment.
Oh, I am on general public comment? Okay, well, I guess I'll raise a small glass, a very tiny glass of caution to celebrate that the Harvard Westlake School has made an announcement into the public sphere that they are, after the years of anguish that we expressed in this room, they are moving forward with an acquisition nearby and will not be putting, at least at the moment, any kind of giant parking structure into the hillside of Coldwater Canyon. So this is a measured celebration. That said, Howard Sunken and Edgar Colodion are the lobbyists who are diligently trying to figure out, A, what they paid for it, and B, how Professor Kocorian could be helpful. And we are, in the smallest possible way, appreciative of this action because there's still an omission of clarity. And we do need that because it does not take long to delay and then move forward and put something even worse. We just want the public in the area to feel heard and to have a fair shake, and so thanks for that, at least.
Thank you. Okay, John Walsh, on items 5, 6, 31 through 36, and 42.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. You do a good job on street lighting. You know, I don't get up here and say, "I'm a white guy, and we don't want any minorities here!" We... No, you do a good job. I say you do a good job. I go back to 1966. I go back before Bradley. And number 31? This is, uh, street lighting. These aren't the numbers that I gave you. Number 36? These are not the numbers I gave you. I'm going to have to write my numbers out and hand them to you, because these are not the numbers I gave you. These are harmless...
Mr. Walsh, share on everything. It's all electronic, and those are the ones that you filled out. Mr. Walsh, again, 5, 6, 31 through 36, and 42.
Well, I'll write them out for the city clerk next time. On the bicycles? I'm tired of bicycles. Hey, the bicycles belong on the road, not on the street. Senior citizens are killed by bicycles here, but it's politically correct to kill a senior citizen on the side pavement. That's the way...it's okay to do that, and that's what's happening now in the city. As far as the...since you're...since you're not giving me the numbers I actually wrote down twice, I will...next time here, I will hand it to you, Mr. City Clerk, in my blood, and then you can do what you want with it. But these are not the numbers I handed out...that I handed in. But as far as the recall...okay, recall, I'm going into my minute. Recall Bonin. Recall Bonin. Recall Bonin. And we've got lots of Jewish dollars, lots and lots of Jewish dollars to recall him. Notice how the blacks elect blacks, the whites elect whites, and, you know, the Hispanics elect Hispanics. Who did the Jews reelect? A Christian. What's the matter with you Jews? What's the matter with you? And then he took your lanes away from you and handed them over to bikes until you started cracking the Jew whip. And when you cracked the Jew whip, he handed back all the traffic lanes. And I'm telling you right now that this city, that this building is a fire trap. They are using Saturdays to start repairing it. If you...we have a document that proves that. But the reporters here in LA, David Zanarza, all he wants to do is suck the mayor's...
All right, thank you very much. And Armando Herman? And you're on items...
It's on here. No, it's a...
You lost the list, sir?
Six.
5, 6...
31.
31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, and 42. And then 37, 30...and 37.
What about 39?
Don't have a card for you on 39.
Okay, just another discrimination against me. So you see, on item 42 in CD 15, you heard about the Police Department, the acronym of LAPD, another relative program donating unclaimed bicycles to children, possibly, but I wouldn't know, other than to instruct the General Services that we need assistance by the city attorney rookie, Mr. Keebler, in facilitating a location, maybe up 103rd Street where all the Watts children live who need bicycles. I agree. When you do a good job, I don't have to stand here and go, "Nah, nah, 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 nah." See? You've done something good for the children in Watts. Now I go to the next item, 36. Disimbursement of Measure M Sales Tax? Well, there's a 12% sales tax today at midnight. Not all of us are happy. No one's ever happy with sale taxes. That's why at 5:00 in the morning, I was calling Kamala Harris' office, and guess who answered? One of her staff. And I said, "Regarding disbursement of Measure M Sales Tax, Ms. Kamala Harris, really? Have you been to LA since you left? I sat on the stairs with you at USC when you got voted in regarding how we use sales tax, how we use all measures, and instead, we all get fucked." Then I go to item Rent Escrow. When you do a good job, all of you, all I can say, "Fuck you." And then when I go to the other items, like item 5, CD 11, the recall Bonin of continued consideration of hearing a protest. Aren't we all against the protests?
Yes.
Why?
Because Imperial Highway Street Lighting District, Herman, has a recommendation by the mayor to deny the protest in confirmation of assessments due to Los Angeles Administrative Code, Government Code, which nobody follows. They're called rules of engagement. Hey, Herb, I love you. And then I go to item Little Sex, like the little kids would say to elected officials. Uh, CD 4, woo, woo. Continued consideration of hearing protest, Weaveley Drive, and Auburn Street Lighting District. We need more lights to view all the pimps and the crips. So, yeah, when I was at the LAPD Police Commission yesterday for two and a half hours, hearing the protests of Mr. McBride, Officer McBride, Detective McBride, he talked about how the city never said, "Thank you for all the good service and your time as a detective for LAPD." But he sure did get a handsome, fucked-up check of $1.5 million fucking dollars from all you white niggers, too. The same way Michael Hunt, Wayne Spindler are only asking you for half of that. So the punitive damages and all damages based on Dean Ferguson, the Ninth Circuit Court ruling, stop restricting speakers to 60 fucking seconds, Keebler man. Because I am disabled, I demand two fucking minutes to fuck you. Ahhh!
All right, colleagues, let's go ahead and take items now, 5, 6, 31 through 42, and then 44 through 46. Basically, it's everything except for 43. Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those items. 5, 6, 31 through 42, 44, 45, and 46. Go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, on number 18, as amended, I'd actually like to add that it not only go to public safety, but also duly referred to homeless and poverty. So we'll go ahead and do it as amended, and we'll go ahead and open the roll on 18. And tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, one no.
Okay. And now we'll go ahead and vote on item 43 as amended. Did you?
Speaker...
You can talk to the sergeants, but please don't yell out.
And, Mr. President, for clarification, 43 has an amending motion. 43A has been circulated and posted.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and open the roll as amended. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Councilmember Ruh?
40 forthwith, please.
Item 40, 40 forthwith, without objection. That'll be the order. We have two general public comments, we'll go ahead and call those now. Harriet Elliott for general public comment.
I'm in Wesson's district. I have about eight people who've contacted me over a decade, and it's a very strange...they act over-familiar with me. I went to La Puente High, and two...three of them, Delia Delgado, Fred Mariani, and Valerie Vaie, all contacted me, and they go on and on and on with their email, and I'm like, "Why are these people contacting me?" And then I review the situation, and I realize they were all caught with drugs, okay? I'm a union member, and I go to local 645 meetings, and a man named Alex Gomez sits right next to me like molasses. And I remember Alex was caught with drugs also. Now, the probation department is doing a COINTELPRO against political activists. That's what's going on. They actually have been directed by the probation department to get information from political activists. This is serious. It's unmistakable. Thank you for your time.
Hey, no, thank you very much. Jessica?
My name is Jessica Salins. I was hoping to speak on item 18, which redistributed half a million dollars in funding from LSA from crisis and bridge housing to ERT teams, which are under LAPD's HOPE teams. We know that the LAPD HOPE teams are ineffective in getting people who are experiencing homelessness housing, and I have some data on that. More than 7,500 people for HOPE numbers that were contacted in the first year of HOPE teams resulted in 1,150 cleanups. Less than 400 were placed into any sort of housing, including temporary. 69% of LA County voted for Measure H, and I know that this doesn't have to do with Measure H, but the people of LA want to see our residents experiencing homelessness in temporary and permanent housing. To move funding, a half a million dollars from crisis and bridge funding, and everybody voting on it basically unanimously, is inappropriate. It's not...
Mr. Herman, sit down. Excuse me. Okay, sergeants, please escort him out for disrupting the meeting. Okay, sergeants, please escort him out for disrupting the meeting. Thank you.
I was hoping to make a public comment on something else and make a public comment on eighteen.
Ma'am, that was your one minute. Eighteen already had a public hearing in committee.
I understand, and I was there, and I gave public comment.
We can't continue to have a conversation, but we truly appreciate it.
So can I just have another thirty seconds for my public comment?
We can, or we have to do that to everybody else. Mr. Herman is continuing to disrupt this meeting as the sergeants are escorting him out. Thank you very much. All right colleagues, we are gonna go ahead and... Okay, let's go ahead and take up item forty-nine. So we'll go ahead and open the roll on item forty-nine. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now we have a reconsideration on item three from yesterday's council agenda. It was council file number one seven, one one, two seven. So we'll go ahead and open the roll for reconsideration. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, before I call the vote, it's item three from yesterday's council agenda. It was council file number one seven, one one, two seven. It's the prohibited items list. Okay? Okay, seeing no speakers on the queue, we'll go ahead and... That was already satisfied. Public comment was already satisfied on that item in committee as well. So we'll go ahead and... Open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, there's a request from the police department to move that forward, urgent, fourth with. So we'll go ahead and open the roll on that. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, and we have motions for posting and referral? We had fifty-three left. For a closed session. We're gonna go ahead and go into actually closed session on item fifty-three. So sergeants, if we can go ahead and secure the chambers for closed session item on item fifty-three.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before, where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
Five eight five nine, KF five oh sixty one, three.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after ten PM until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and we have to no good. Some of these kids still don't... They're not aware of the law, and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of eighteen, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you, and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as the Grill Beach.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents. The guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message, is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us. They are here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair.
Dave Better and while we begin with an eyewitness news exclusive, disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked simply for his orientation, and we're just not gonna tolerate it.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used, and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people as in gaze or just their skin color. It's wrong, and something needs to be done. A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially race. Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury, even if the injury is slight, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act, including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail. And if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the WITIP hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes. WITIP hotline, nine oh nine, nine eight seven, five zero zero five.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost eighty percent of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not. But it's worth the effort to double-check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before, where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
Five eight five nine, KF five oh sixty one, three.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after ten PM until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic... We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and we have no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law, and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You'll be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you, and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as grill beef.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, it's a guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message, is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair.
Stay better and well, we begin with an Eyewitness News exclusive disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked simply for his orientation, and we're just not going to tolerate it.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used, and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people as in gaze or just their skin color. It's wrong, and something needs to be done. A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury even if the injury is slight, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act, including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail, and if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for a prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the We tip hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes. We tip hotline, 909-987-5005.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost 80% of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not. But it's worth the effort to double-check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before, where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10:00 PM until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and we have no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law, and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You'll be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you, and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as grill beef.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, it's a guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message, is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
We've concluded the closed session. We've also concluded all the agenda items. We've also concluded public comment. Before we actually went into closed session, we took all the public comment cards and general public comment. And so with that, we have motions for posting and referral and excuses. We'll go ahead and post, refer, and excuse. And do we have any announcements, colleagues? Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Members, on tomorrow night, Thursday night, at the corner of 24th Street in Hoover, we'll have our Dia de los Muertos celebration in the University Park neighborhood. Will begin at 6:30 PM, and we'll be at the 24th Street Theater.
Excellent, thank you very much. Yes, Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, in light of our game seven tonight with the Dodgers, we are going to be hosting at Pacoima City Hall, a live streaming the game tonight at Pacoima City Hall. We've got plenty of peanuts and Cracker Jack, so we want to invite everybody to come out and see the Dodgers win tonight. Let's go Dodgers!
Very cool, excellent. Thank you. Looking for other announcements? Seeing none? Do we have any adjourning motions? Looking to my right? Seeing none? Looking to my left? Seeing none? That concludes the council agenda, and we are adjourned. Go Dodgers! Go Dodgers!